At the next meeting.
Please come to order to the June 3 special meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Sinayan.
Here. May we have the report, please?
The agenda for the June 3, 2014 special public meeting of the city council was posted on Friday, May 30, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. First item is a public hearing Director of Community Development continued from April 22 and May 13, 2014 regarding proposed general plan map amendment and rezoning of 10 properties along Fernando Court and Cypress Street from industrial mixed use in the land use element of the general plan and from industrial to industrial, commercial, residential mixed use zone. A is a resolution adopting negative declaration, B is a resolution adopting the general plan map amendment, C is ordinance introduction adopting the proposed zoning map amendment, and this was the item that city manager had indicated would move.
Do we need to vote on continuing it?
Yes.
If I don't move, we continue the item?
To a date.
To a date.
To a date certain.
Seconds.
The 24th, I believe we have a full council again on the 24th.
24th to 3:00 PM without further public notice.
Okay, do we need?
Motion?
Yeah, we have a second.
Second.
Can we have roll call?
Council members Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian. Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinayan.
Yes. What's next?
Next item is also a public hearing Director of Community Development. This is continued from May 20, 2014 regarding proposed six-story, 94-unit multifamily residential project to be located at 319 North Central Avenue. A is a motion approving stage one, stage two design review subject to comments and conditions of approval. B is motion approving instrument imposing covenants on real property.
Yes. Yes, sir. We have a, an interesting situation where we have a very attractive companion project to one that was approved by this council, I believe, last year along Central Avenue. And so our senior planner, Kristen Asp, will take you through this latest submittal from Chandler Pratt.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sinayan and members of city council. Chandler Pratt and Partners is requesting approval of a stage one and two final design review for a mixed-use project at 319 North Central Avenue in the Transitional District of the Downtown Specific Plan. The project site is located on the southwest corner of Central Avenue and Myrtle Street, just north and immediately adjacent to the previously approved mixed-use project at Central and California by the same developer. The proposed project is a six-story mixed-use building with approximately 2,000 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor and 94 multifamily residential units above. The building is tallest at six stories, starting at Central, and then steps down towards the west to four stories, consistent with the Downtown Specific Plan guidelines regarding transitional sites. The code requires 131 parking spaces. The project will provide 135, located in a single-level underground parking garage or parking structure and at the ground floor. The subterranean parking for this project will connect to the subterranean parking of the approved project to the south. Parking is accessed from both Myrtle Street and from California Avenue. The project provides additional public open space to utilize the incentives of the DSP to obtain additional height and floor area. Additionally, the developer has requested a density bonus for the project pursuant to SB 1818. By making four of the units available to very low-income households, the developer qualifies for one concession. In this case, the developer is requesting an increase in the floor area ratio to 3.36, where three is the maximum permitted. The applicant is not requesting the reduced parking provision provided by SB 1818. An addendum to the DSP EIR was prepared for this project. Staff recommends approval of the combined stage one final design review. And this concludes staff's presentation, and I'd like to turn the rest of the presentation over to Todd Pratt and the project team, who will go over the project design in more detail.
Okay. How many people in the team, project team? Just two. Okay, how much time would you need for the team?
Three minutes.
Okay.
Todd Pratt with Chandler Pratt, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Council Members, Mr. Ochoa, and all the staff. Chandler Pratt is pleased to bring to you another project for approval that's adjacent to the previous project that we've designed. We took a look at the vision that the city leaders had for the Downtown Specific Plan, and we have brought to you a project that essentially is fitting hand in glove with the first project and tries to comply in all respects with the Downtown Specific Plan zoning. We are bringing over approximately $1,005,000 in permit fees to the city. We're generating probably on the order of 6, 800 jobs, many of which will be local, and we have voluntarily provided an affordable component in this project. The design is decidedly very complimentary with the first phase, and we've worked very closely with all of the staff to make sure that the design meets all the utmost standards for the, for the goals of the Central Avenue and the Downtown Specific Plan. Our architect is here and members of our entitlement team is here if there's any questions.
Okay, let's make sure we open the public hearing, please.
Do you have any, do you have slides with you to show?
Just the ones that Kristen had. And everybody has the renderings in your packet.
Okay. You appear to have no questions.
Well, I wanted them to show me and us, I know it's in the renderings, but to show the open space. If somebody has that, you can put it up on the screen. How that's going to work, the publicly accessible open space.
Much like the first phase, on the corner, we have a public plaza.
Oh, so it's the cutout underneath?
It's the cutout, yeah. It's right on the corner, and there's going to be retail shops next to it, and then right behind it would be the entry lobby for the apartments.
So that's the central corner?
Central and Myrtle, yes.
That'd be A, I think it's A1 dot one.
Yeah, I have, it's on a few, yeah, A1 dot one. So is it retail all along Central?
Yes, retail all the way down Central.
What about on, on Myrtle in California?
There's a little bit that overflows around the corner, and, and then we have some ancillary uses in the driveway and whatnot, along with the apartment lobby.
So you, when you say retail, do you mean retail and office or just retail?
Just retail shops.
So it's basically the same design as the other building?
Yes.
Thank you. We have one, we have one speaker. Thank you. It's Louis Bayoka. I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty reading this name. How much time would you need? Three minutes, okay? Please state your name for the record.
Council, I'm here, and I have quite a few questions.
Would you state your name, please, for the record?
Louis Bayoko.
Thank you.
I, I'm not against projects being built, but I, I have one thing to tie to it, that no variances will be given or required to complete the project. I, I, is it the understanding that this was Myrtle and Central, now it's California, so they, it's quite a big project. This, the house on the, or the building on the corner was owned, I guess, by School District or something? But anyway, I didn't, never seen a sign for sale, and I'd like to know why the public wasn't offered to be able to buy that property. But I'll move along. My parking is the big thing. Now, in the little notice that was mailed to me, it says that they were going to have tandem parking. tandem parking is not the good thing. I like to see parking for standard-sized automobile, four-door sedan, American car, Buick, Chevy, that size or Ford. And there's no, absolutely no tandem parking. The parking will be for the apartments, the store, the stores, the employees, and also for the general public that goes to these stores. Is there parking for? What number of parking spaces for the employees of this project? Big project. What number of parking spaces for the store customers? And then what parking spaces are for the apartment? And then on, on the, on the street of Myrtle, we have, just like Lexington, that 300 block of either one of those parkings that are premium. I'd like to have the two-hour parking restored to that block. We had a two-hour parking, and somebody went to the city and got the parking removed. They happen to be an apartment owner, bragging about that they, they were responsible for that, and that they don't allow tenants to park on it. Nothing's been done. And on, on the parking, the two-hour parking, I would like to see strictly two-hour parking for everybody, no special permits for anyone, homeowners or renters. And is the project a four-story or a four-and-six-story, or is it a full six-story? That's very vague. Does the project have a pool, a rec room, an office? Where are these people going to park they're going to participate there? And I own a home, a 300 block from Myrtle Street. I've owned it since 1956. And this project has caused my property to lose value because you won't be able to get into my house. They're parking all over, and now they block the driveways. Irresponsible. Nothing is, none. Now we go to the sewers. We know that the sewers were too small, with all the building on Central. They dug up Central and put big sewer lines in. Now we've got this other big project, is that size of the sewer overtaken? We have to dig again? Are we going to dig Myrtle Street all the way to, to Pacific if there's a main line there? Nothing, nothing has been addressed that I know. All the new buildings on Central, maybe down, the parking, maybe they'll park down Myrtle Street more. There's the room now. Glendale is, is short on water supply. The price of water's gone up. They tell us not to water. You don't water, they cite you for having a yellow line. I know, I've been cited. Southern California is running out of water. If we don't get a new supply, what are we going to do? And we're putting 90 units in there, even if they flush the toilet only once a week, that's a lot of water.
Mr. Bayoko, I, excuse me, just, I, you have three minutes, you've been speaking for about five, can you wrap it up?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
How many new police officers, firemen, city employees are needed due to this project? And the, and the trash pickup? Right now, they take the dumpsters out and they park them on my side of the street in front of the house when there's an opening. It's, it's a mess. It's a hard place to live, and it's, and it's getting worse. Like I say, I'm not against the project itself, as long as it's done without any variances. If you can, they were supposed to send me the map, the little package with all the details on it. So I'm speaking from this sheet that was here last, what, last week and before it was postponed. So a lot of it, I haven't covered. And I talked to other people, why don't you get down there and say something? They say, what for? Why should we waste our time?
Well, thank you for coming and speaking, Mr. Bayoko.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
If you want to close.
I would like to ask if any more, if from Chandler Pratt wants to address any of the issues raised.
First of all, can they please give the gentleman the renderings, the complete set of the plan, so that then he can see and share with his neighbors what the project looks like? I think they deserve to see that. He asked about the number of stories. It's six at the front, it's Central, but it goes down to four, where it backs, where it starts to go down the block, down Myrtle. So it'll be four from, as you look at it, from, you know, from the single-family houses. It won't be six there.
So I was hoping that Chandler Pratt would.
Yeah, so hopefully they can give them, do you have a packet to give them? No, no, you don't have to come up here, if you can give them the packet.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
But they want to, if you want to address any, any of the issues raised by the gentleman, you're more than welcome to, now's the chance.
We have designed this project with a three, four, or five step-down in the back, the same as we did on the first one, so that the rear of the building towards the west is more compatible scale with, with the lower density as you go down Myrtle. We have also designed it to exceed the number of parking required, but specifically with some of the questions that were asked, we have parking for the retail spaces with eight stalls for the 2,000 feet, which will just be two shops. We also have guest parking, and we have more than adequate parking for all the residents. And the property, once complete, will have a couple of employees on site, such as the property manager and whatnot. So there's very adequate parking, completely within the building, in the garage, and will not require any offsite parking, so.
Can, can we ask, once this project is built, that our staff looks at the parking situation on Myrtle in California, and then evaluates whether they should go back to the restricted, the two-hour parking? And if so, bring that to, whatever method that goes through, whether it's the Transportation Commission, sorry, the Parking Commission, but let's keep an eye on that, so that it doesn't impact the residents on that street. And if they feel that the parking, the two-hour parking is needed now, maybe they, you can talk to them about the process, because there is a petition process by which the neighbors can request restricted parking. So I'd like to ask one of our staff members to get with the gentleman and give him that procedure, so that if the neighbors want to go now and request the restricted parking, they can do that.
Yes, ma'am.
The gentleman also wanted to know if there was a pool or a recreational room in the building.
We do have a pool on Phase One, and this phase, there is no pool, but it's adjoining the first phase, so there is a pool in the overall complex. And we do have recreational rooms, fantastic amenity spaces, rooftop gardens, there's a central courtyard, barbecue areas inside the courtyard. It's really going to be a wonderful space for the residents.
Okay, Ms. Friedman?
Yeah, I thought he might have been asking about whether there was publicly accessible, because I think he was concerned about traffic of people going there for the pool.
No, no publicly accessible pool, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Well, I would just like to make a comment about something the gentleman said about water, because I hear this.
Should we close the public hearing? Let's close the public hearing.
Because I hear this come up a lot as a concern about apartments, or about building in general. The only way that these projects impact water is that if you believe that if we don't build those units, nobody else will in Southern California. So in other words, if we don't build an apartment building that adds those 200 units, if you think that 200 people who would be moving here from somewhere else in the state won't move here, then that would impact water. My contention is that if there's a demand, if we don't build it in Glendale, they'll build it in Pasadena, Santa Clarita, the new Hall Pass, Victorville, because this water issue is a Southern California, it's actually a California issue, but it's more particularly a Southern California issue, it's not a Glendale issue, because we get, the majority of our water is imported water from the north of the state, in the same way that all of Southern California primarily gets their water from the northern part of the state. So really, you're talking about people moving to the entire Southern California. Whether they move in Glendale or move to Santa Clarita, it doesn't make much difference, it's the same pool of water. So if the entire Southern California stopped building, you'd have an impact, but if you're just talking about shuffling that building around to different areas, unless it's a city that uses a lot of groundwater, and even there, there's problems, you know, that's really, the problem is people moving to the area. And the vast majority of California's water goes to agriculture, not to people drinking it. It's more than, about 70%, 80% of the water is used to grow plants, not to feed people. So it's a big, the water issue is a big, complicated issue, and it's, you know, there's an impact there, but it's really an impact about overpopulation and people moving to the area and a water supply that's troubled for many reasons, not just related to the amount of people that are using the water, but to the, getting that supply, where it needs to go, when it needs to go there. So I just, you know, I hear it a lot from people, so I just wanted to put it in some context. A lot of the issues we're having with water is not to do with the population. We've grown in Southern California a tremendous amount in 10 years. We use the same amount of water in Southern California that we did 10 years ago, because of conservation. There's a lot of other issues that have to do with the water, having to do with protected fish, drought, all sorts of stuff.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman. Mr. Najarian?
Well, I have a couple of questions on the environmental impact. Who can answer them? So this was given a, what sort of analysis was done?
It was done through an addendum to the Downtown Specific Plan EIR.
Okay.
And which is, which basically assumes the same assumptions in the Downtown Specific Plan, a program EIR, if you remember, that's a program EIR, and based on the assumptions of the program EIR, as the projects fit in the assumptions of that environmental impact report, there is a, an, a study that, that analyzes the, the consistency with that, and that, and the addendum is provided at that level.
So there's no finding of a significant impact in the recreation?
No, well, no. As, as consistent with the Downtown Specific Plan EIR, which it is.
Did we do that, Downtown?
The Downtown Specific Plan EIR, we did when we adopted the Downtown Specific Plan in 2006. Program.
Do those get stale after a while? I mean, shouldn't they be updated? Are they required to be updated?
Uh, well, if it was a, if it was a master environmental impact report, where the projects consistent with the master environmental impact report could be built without environmental review, that would be an issue. Usually five to seven years is the lifetime of a master environmental impact report. In this case, it was a program environmental impact report where you can tear off the information and you do another analysis, which we have done consistently and cumulatively as projects have been built. So we have, every time we have done a project review, we have reviewed the program EIR, and as necessary, we have adjusted the information through an addendum by saying whether or not it stays in substantial compliance with the environmental impact report. And that has been the case here.
So my concern, however, is on the recreation and the parks and library impact. Now, in January 21, we were discussing impact fees, and at a time when we were discussing how soon we were going to extend that pipeline period, it was suggested, raised, agreed to by many on the council, that should be 60 days, period, after the adoption of the new higher park fees. Mr. Quintero asked you a question at about 1 hour, 7 minutes of the discussion about, were you aware of any, any projects that were coming through? You said you were not aware of any in the downtown area. So is it fair to say that you became aware of this project after the, the park and impact fees were approved?
This project was submitted after the parks' impact fees were, were adopted, correct?
Do you know when that was submitted?
March 3.
March 3.
March 3.
Yes.
And the deadline, then, for a January 28 approval of the ordinance and resolution would be somewhere around March 28.
March 29, yes.
29. So when was this deemed submitted?
It was submitted on March 3.
It was submitted on March 3, and it was deemed, was completed, ready to go on March 3.
The application.
No, it, I.
Application.
On the 21st. The Kristen Asp, who's the case planner, reviewed it and wrote a letter deeming the application complete on March 21.
They beat it by a few days.
Yes, they did.
Six days, seven.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that continues to surprise me, we worked on that Downtown Specific Plan environmental document that went with it. It was completed in '06, but we started years before on it, did plenty of public hearings or whatever, and we did it with the knowledge that if substantial developments went in, there would be addendums prepared to see if there's any changes that were not reflected in the master plan. And the master plan for downtown addressed all the utilities, all the infrastructure, everything was analyzed at the time, the addendums to see if there's any changes. According to the environmental document, the addendum says in here, the addendum concludes the project would not result in any circumstance requiring preparation of a subsequent, another document. No substantial changes, no substantial changes, no new information. So the applicant has done what he's supposed to do and what we require of him. So as far as water, utilities, everything, it's all been addressed downtown. Staff did a thorough job over the years developing that environmental document downtown, involving the entire staff of the city and every department to create it. Though I continue to hear on these projects, is it adequate? Has it been addressed? Yes, yes, yes. Everything has been addressed. If it wasn't, if anything were to exceed the capacity of the system as addressed in the environmental document, the applicant would be required to upgrade the system, whether it was sewers or storm drains, water lines, whatever. That is the, on the applicant. So enough on the environmental document, and I want some, I want to get a copy of the environmental document, the master one, because I want to go back and go through it again on something, key points, because we hear this every single.
You're talking about the program EIR.
Yeah, that I pulled out here, the Greater Downtown Specific Plan Final Program EIR. Isn't that equivalent to a master? How, how far below a master?
The program is actually more, more comprehensive than a master and allows.
Well, that's great. I'm using the wrong terminology.
So we will, we'll have a copy for you.
If that's a request to put it on for review and reconsideration, I would second.
No, no. I'm trying to re-familiarize myself because of the people get up here on these projects and criticize. I started with environmental documents in 1970, as I've told you, and it's become like, it's become, what do you call it, rebating? It's something to pick on. If you want to stop a project, find the EIR and then start finding discrepancies in it, or it's out of touch, or whatever. Every project I've dealt with in 30, 40 years has used that same weapon. As, environment documents have got bigger and bigger and more costly, you know?
If the council recalls, I'm sorry, just on that point, sir, if the council recalls, I think it was last week or the week before, you had asked, and it was seconded, that we would bring you the reevaluation of the entire process at the end of the summer.
They can do that, but I want the environmental document not to change, but to re-familiarize myself, because it's been a number of years. The only thing, oh, it's a duplicate, we already approved the other project. One of the things that's not been mentioned is that the parking garage underneath, the two are tied together, so you can have parking going from one building to the other. I think that's important, because you don't know where the vacancies may be. So I find no problem with the project at all. It's a good developer, and I accept it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Quintero?
It's a good companion to the project next door and fine with it.
Okay, that was nice. So without having to reopen the public hearing, can someone ask the question, what are the sizes of the units in the building?
Yes, sir. Oh, wrong, sir.
There they come, without opening the public hearing.
Yeah. Okay. Let's reopen the public hearing.
My name's Keith McCloskey, the architect for the project, KTY. Just wanted to come up and confirm the approximate average square footages. We've broken it down by the original approved project, which really did consist of larger units, and this one is basically a counterpart to that, and it's offering some similar units, but also some larger and smaller units that weren't offered in the other project, to get a variety of unit types. The average sizes in the new Phase Two, 319. The average sizes in the new Phase Two, three, 19, Cala, Central are 1,202 square foot three bedrooms, 988 square foot two bedrooms, 766 square foot one bedrooms, and some 608 square foot studios. So there's a blend of, of all those unit types.
And you said the other project, which I, I wasn't on the council, I haven't voted on it, the other project had larger units, more larger units?
Yeah, the other project started at 778 average for one bedrooms, and then up to 1,400 square feet for three bedrooms. So slightly larger average.
Okay, thank you. Close the public hearing.
Would you like a motion?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I'll say a couple of words.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I'll, I'm, I'm, so I'm looking at the renderings, and the Phase One portion of at least the way it looks on the, on the exhibits that we were given is just architecturally just unattractive to me. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, maybe it's just, exactly, maybe it's just an outline of the building, it's not really, doesn't really do justice to what it's supposed to look like.
You mean this? I don't, those aren't the true colors.
Right. New portion is more expressive, and again, it's probably meant to pop out. So it, it looks like a nice building. The city, obviously, the staff have done their due diligence in terms of making sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. The unit sizes aren't too small, because that's, again, I don't understand, an overabundance of tiny units in Glendale, I don't understand who's going to need those. So I'll, I'll support the project.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, then I'll move to A and B.
Second.
Hold call, please.
Council members Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. What's next?
At three is a public hearing, Director of Community Development regarding proposed mixed-use project to be located at 409 to 413 North Brand Boulevard and 121 West Lexington Avenue. At three, A is a motion approving Stage One and Two Design Review, subject to comments and conditions of approval.
We have for you two public hearings, separate items, but related project. This is at the 419 block, 400 block of North Brand Boulevard, commonly referred to as the Gaucho Village location. This campus project will stretch, is proposed to stretch, from Brand Boulevard over to Orange and acts as a pivoting anchor for the north end of downtown. So with that, our senior planner, Villia Zemetitis, will take you through the project overview.
Should we, just one second, should we read item number four into the record also? Since we said there's two, you said there are two public hearings, so.
At four is a public hearing, Director of Public Works, regarding conditional vacation of a portion of the First Alley, Westerly at Brand Boulevard, north of Lexington Drive, Alley 234, in connection with the mixed-use project located at, to be located at 409 to 413 North Brand Boulevard, vacation case number 176V. At four A is a resolution ordering the vacation, and at four B is resolution adopting Plan Number 12-235.
Thank you. It's open in public hearing.
Mayor Sinanian, council members. As mentioned by Mr. Ochoa, this project entails a new mixed-use development proposed by the Amiti Real Estate Group. The entitlements before you is essentially a combined Stage One and Stage Two Design Review. The project itself is located in the Downtown Specific Plan Gateway District. It encompasses approximately 1.3 acres. It spans from Brand Boulevard across the existing alleyway to Orange, south of Milford, and is directly north of the Glenn Fed Building, the historic building on the corner of Brand Boulevard and Lexington, as well as the Glendale Annex Building on the corner of Lexington and Orange. The new mixed-use project consists of 5,000 square feet of restaurant space fronting Brand Boulevard, nine live-work units, and 219 residential apartment units up above. Designed in a contemporary design, the building essentially terraces from one story on Brand Boulevard up to eight stories along Orange. Parking for the project is provided within a four-level subterranean garage with access from Orange and Milford Street. The parking garage has a total of 545 parking spaces. From that total, 138 spaces are devoted to the required parking for the Glenn Fed Annex Building directly to the south. So the parking garage is being demolished, and the parking is being replaced per code. The project complies with the DSP and zoning code. No variances are proposed, no incentives are requested. A detailed design analysis was included in your staff report. Staff recommends approval of the Design One, Stage One, Stage Two Designer View with three conditions. An addendum to the previously certified Downtown Specific Plan EIR was prepared for the project. This concludes staff's brief overview. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. If not, then I would like to turn the rest of the presentation over to Mr. Rodney Khan and the design team.
I have some questions.
Mr. Najarian, before you ask your question, I want to point out to Mr. Garcia that I work two buildings over, I, I work on that block, and I believe Councilman Najarian's also within the, was it the 500 feet? But I believe since then, since the Phase One was approved, which I did not participate in, you've given your clearance to me, followed the process.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as it related to a, another nearby project, yes, we did conclude that because, in both cases, leases didn't allow you to sublet your property absent approval of your landlord, that, and it didn't change the value of that, that right to sublease, that there would be no conflict. I should point out, though, that the FPPC has modified the 500-foot rule, so that that's not the only part of the test. But again, given that in this case you're both tenants and not owners, that the change doesn't impact the discussion, but it would in, in other discussions, and actually it's something we're working on to get some information out to you on that.
Thank you, very well. I just wanted to put that on the record. Mr. Najarian?
Well, since we're putting disclosures on the record, I may ask, are there any other disclosures that count, any council member would like to make regarding a possible conflict or the appearance of a conflict of interest with this project? Take that as a no. Villia, there's a large parking garage currently on Orange servicing the Annex Building. What's happening with that?
The parking garage is being demolished as part of the project.
So what's happening with those parking spaces that are being lost?
By code, the Glendale Fed Building, the one that is on the corner of Brand and Lexington, is not required to provide any parking. It was constructed in 1959, when there was no parking requirement for commercial buildings. The Glenn Fed Annex Building is being provided parking in the new subterranean garage, 138 spaces as required by code.
How many current spaces are available in the current parking garage?
I would have to take a look at my notes.
Okay, it's, I think it's more than 138.
It is more than 130, yes.
So there's going to be a net, fair to say that there's going to be a net loss of parking, whether or not the code requires replacement or not?
Correct.
Do we have an idea as to where those cars are going to park? You don't. That's not, okay. So that's a concern of mine right off the bat. My second concern is this is a large project. It's a, I think, fair to call it a sophisticated project, and, back again, our January 21st meeting, we were setting our park library impact fees, and we were determining how large the pipeline period should be. Mr. Hassan Hugani indicated that he was only aware of two projects that were outside the downtown area that may be affected by changing of the fees. It's unusual, in my opinion, that we have two sophisticated projects that have come through, basically just under the wire, avoiding the increased fair share parks and library impact fees. So when was this deemed submitted? Do you have that information?
Yes, I do. The project itself was submitted on March 3rd, and the Stage One was deemed complete on March the 26th.
So would you say that's a pretty quick turnaround time?
This would be only for Stage One. Stage Two is much more detailed, and so even though Stage One was deemed complete on March 26th, staff has been working with the project team in order to get it deemed complete for Stage Two.
However, a deemed complete for Stage One still gets them under the wire for the parks fees, as far as you know.
Based on the ordinance for the pipeline, yes.
Did you want to say something, Mr.? Are you sure?
Yes, sir.
And so we had two projects that this council didn't know were coming. This is not so much a question, but a statement. Two significant projects that this council were told, staff had no idea we're on the horizon, and when this council set its time period to a 60-day implementation date rather than a 30-day implementation date, we were under the impression that the only projects were outside of the downtown area. And now, in the last hour, we are being presented with two large projects in the downtown area, which are just getting in under the wire for the lower, let's call them the subsidized park and library impact fees. I am not very happy about that. I know that I would have, I would have made a strong recommendation that we go to the 30 days. In fact, Mr. Quintero, at 1 minute 60 and 30 seconds in the, in the tape, was assured that if no project gets it in within 30 days, because it'll take you 30 days to go through the paperwork and approve it, if no project can get it in within the 30 days, then we don't have to worry. In fact, I think there's also a news press article that Mr. Hugani, you're quoted at. They don't get it in 30 days, they're probably not going to be able to avoid the new fees.
Well, forgive me, sir, I guess I need to understand.
Well, I'm not done talking.
Well, I, I, but I need, but to the extent.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ochoa, I'm not done.
Can I have a chance to, just to.
The mayor's running.
Later on?
At the conclusion of his comments, respectfully.
Please, absolutely.
So I find that troublesome, because, looking at the tape again, and don't believe my word for it, it's a January 21st meeting, special meeting of the Glendale City Council. The impression was that there's a 30-day period with which projects we're going to have to submit, factoring in a 30-day application fee, the California Uniform Streamline Planning Act. And this council clearly stated that they were at their end of subsidizing units and developments, large developments, coming in and taking advantage of the artificially low parks and impact, parks and library impact fee. So I have a, I have a problem with that, and I'm not sure who to blame, but I'm not happy about it. I would have much rather had an answer from Mr. Hugani that I have no idea what other projects are out there, there may be others out there. It seems, it seems almost impossible to believe that these projects all of a sudden landed in our planning department on May, excuse me, on March 3rd, March 4th, and got a, a quick approval, just inching in under the parks and library impact fee. So that's just my statement at this point. I'm concerned about the loss of parking. This is in the downtown area. That area is already very much impacted, and I don't know, I guess, is that okay with, question, is that okay with staff? I mean, we're losing some parking spaces there. I'm not talking about legal, I don't want you to say it's outside of the code, because Ms. Villia told us that it's a grandfathered building, they don't have to do that, all the parking required for the annex is being, is being included in there. By the way, was the parking changed? Was the plan changed to increase parking for the, to absorb the annex parking?
I don't.
Recently?
I don't, I, let me ask, answer your first question, then maybe I can understand your second question. The first question was, is staff concerned about lots of parking?
Yes.
Yes, staff is concerned about lots of parking. That's one of the, that's one of the reasons that we put a condition that despite the fact that technically the Glenn Fed Building in the corner does not require any parking because it was built in 1959, we ask that within a year after the occupancy of the building, we will do an analysis, and if there is reason to think that, to believe that the parking demand on the site is higher than what is actually being provided per code, that there is a, an opportunity to require additional parking through other means on the site. That's why we actually are recommending that. At this point, the authority, we do not have the authority to ask beyond the required parking, but we have the authority to say that if the parking condition is, is diminished as a result of the project, and the number of buildings that are using the same site at the same time, then we have the authority to go back and require additional parking. That's why we said that. So that's the answer to your first question. Yes, we are concerned, yes, we have addressed it. The second question was, was the plan changed during the process? I don't know. No, it didn't, it was not.
Do you feel that a one-time snapshot, one year after this is opened, is sufficient to ensure that the parking situation does not get out of control? Should it not be an annual review of the parking? Because, as we all know, these buildings don't fill up immediately, it takes months, sometimes over a year, to fill up. Should your, would you feel better as a staff that is concerned about the parking downtown to take an annual review of the parking and then impose those conditions that you're considering, the valet, et cetera, on an annual basis?
I would not have any opposition to that if that was the council's wish to do that on an annual basis. However, I would recommend that I put an end to this. If it's annually for a number of years, until we, or until a certain percent of the building is occupied, that would make reasonable sense. And if that is the wish of the council, by all means, staff would, would full-heartedly support that. However, if it was annually in perpetuity, I would say that might be a little excessive.
Well, no, that wouldn't make sense. I mean, the whole point is, is to make sure that when you do your analysis, that the building is near full in parking. To continue an annual review once it's fully occupied would not make very much sense. Was there an expedite fee paid for these, for this project?
No, because they were not expedited.
They were not expedited?
No.
So staff went through this whole project between March 4th and March 26th, and they got deemed submitted?
Yes, I must, I must emphasize this, because you actually referenced that prior to asking me to come to the podium. It has been the pride of the planning staff for the last four years that we exceed the, the velocity that the Permit Streamlining Act requires in deeming application and reviewing applications, and, and we have always aimed at reviewing applications, and that has been consistently the case in our department, especially on the projects, where we have a complete picture and a complete packet that we, we try to do in an exceeding, an accelerated fashion to review that. There's nothing that we implemented in this round that we haven't been implementing for the last five years consistently.
So what's your success rate in, in that accelerated review? Are you batting 100% or, because, to be honest, I have a lot of.
I'm not betting on anything, sir. I'm saying that we have taken pride and joy, and we have shown consistently that we do our plan, review of applications and the processing of the applications by far faster than many other studies around us. That was what the council at some point asked us to do, and we have been implementing that. And that is all I'm saying.
And before January 21st, at about 3:30 PM, you had no. And before January 21st, at about 3:30 PM, you had no idea that this project was on the books or coming-
No, we had no idea, no application-
I'm sorry, let me, let me address that, because, with, with respect, sir, for you to question issues of parking and planning and programming, by all means, as a policymaker, that is your right, that is unto you. You have certainly that right to say, "We are wrong, and we are not good at our job", and to fire me, and ultimately to find someone that will fire Mr. Higani, to get you precisely what you're looking for. But at this stage, at this point in time, to question his integrity on this point, or mine for that matter by extension, or the city attorneys, is respectfully quite wrong, and something that is not within, ought not be within this entire line of discussion. There is no crystal ball. It's amazing to me that we would think that it's anything other than coincidence, or just the natural innate invisible hand of Adam Smith coming to play, that if we're going to jack up the fees on folks, surprisingly, somebody, a developer, an investor, would come in and do their dead level best to get in before their cost goes up. I would think that that is a very logical thing for a private investment interest to do, and in fact, that's what they did do. You can say that we are wrong, you can say that we are stupid, you wouldn't be the first, but if you say that we're unethical, and stupid for that matter, then you have very real decisions to make as a city council.
I will not stop my advocacy for what I believe is a overbuilding, accelerated, ultra-dense downtown that is currently happening before our eyes week after week after week. And I don't want to point out some of your comments, Mr. Ochoa, that were, "Oh, I can go back a year", and you're saying, "Oh, we're at the end of this whole development thing, we're not going to have much more, this is going to be the end of it." But I will not stop, and even if it's four to one from now until the end of my term on council, I am going to advocate for what I think is best for this city, and if I have to question information that I received on the cusp of instituting these park and library impact fees, which I take exception to the word being "jacked up", the only jacking that was being up was the city subsidizing the developers up until that point in their parks impacts and on their library impacts.
The city made a business decision just as those private developers make business decisions. We're in the business of government, sir.
I shall not-
And so the council made that policy, and then the council changed that policy, which is entirely your view.
I shall not be deterred in my zealous advocacy in what I think is right for this city, and it's going to be an issue now until the next election, if that necessarily be it.
And by all means, make that policy-
Absolutely.
But I would only ask that you make that policy in a way that allows us to work with one another, because it's awfully hard to work for folks that you don't trust, and very obviously, while we may disagree, you don't trust what it is that we're giving you, which leaves you a handful of decisions to make, none of which are easy.
I question everything, Mr. Ochoa, and for me to assume anything is, is what it is on its face before me would be wrong on my part, and would be wrong for the residents and the, of this great city of Glendale to do. Thank you, Mr. Senat.
Thank you, Mr. Najari. And Mr. Ochoa, did you address everything that you initially wanted to respond to?
Yes, sir, as much as anyone can.
Thank you, yes. Mr. Quintero?
Okay, well, let me say, in a broad sense, we decided years ago as a city council to move forward with the downtown strategic plans through God knows how many hearings, and we finally have the projects that are coming online, but, which I think are going to be great for the city of Glendale. I think they're going to provide all kinds of employment and all sorts of opportunities. People living in the downtown is the best thing that can happen to this city. But specifically on the park fees, we are in fact generating a lot of money from the current park fees, not the future fees, the current park fees, and I'm quite satisfied with the fees we're generating. And let me go on to say that the demographics that will be occupying these buildings, I believe will put a minimal impact on our parks, a minimal impact on our parks, and a minimal impact on the library. Quite frankly, I think the generation that occupies these buildings are wired in, have their iPads, et cetera, et cetera, so I don't think there's going to be much of an impact on parks or libraries.
Okay, so we have two speakers now representing the Amidi Group, Rodney Khan followed by Bijan Armanpur, and how much time do you need, total?
A total of 15 minutes between the two of us, if that's okay.
Okay, 15 minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. Once again, my name is Rodney Khan, my offices are located here in the beautiful city of Glendale. Our project is located on North Brand Boulevard, and as was pointed out, we are directly north, are directly next to the historic Glendale Federal Building. We worked very hard on the design of our project to take that into consideration, to pay respect to this existing historic building. And as you can see, we have stepped our building along Brand Boulevard and gradually increased the height of our building through a series of steps that allows this historic building to remain visible and prominent. We also wanted to design a project that would actually activate this area of the Boulevard. South Brand Boulevard has the Americana and has the Galleria, and there's been a substantial amount of investment in that area. What we haven't seen is that same type of investment in the mid-brand area until now. This project will entice people, invite them along this area of the Boulevard. Thus, we created a number of pedestrian pasos that will bring people in off of Brand Boulevard through our project onto Orange Street. In order to activate this area, we're providing restaurants on the ground floor. We've strategically placed live-work units, you can see from the stars. We also have residential units as part of this overall campus that we're proposing. Our project will be new construction. It will be quality new construction, which incorporates building materials, finishes, hardscape, landscape, all into an overall package. I want to point out something. We talk a lot about density, we talk about floor area, we talk about development. On this particular site, this project is located in the gateway district of the downtown specific plan. By right, we could do 18 stories on this site. With incentives, we could go up to 25 stories. We are proposing eight stories. I'll carry that one step further. The floor area ratio that's allowed for this site is 7.25. With incentives, it's up to 7.5. Our project proposes 4.55 for a floor area. That is approximately 158,000 square feet less than we are allowed by right. If this was another type of project, if this was an office building, for instance, at some point in the future, this office building could be 25 stories in height, it could be 438,000 square feet, and have all the traffic and all the parking issues that come generally with office buildings. We're not proposing that. This project, the campus on Brand, as mentioned, requires no variances, requires no exceptions, it requires no incentives to be built. The parking, as was pointed out, and we have Mr. Bagdanian, who can elaborate on the parking, the existing, the proposed, and how it all works. The parking, the setbacks, it all meets the standards. It is in full compliance with the downtown specific plan. It was also mentioned, there was environmental analysis done. Environmental impacts for this project were analyzed. Based on an addendum to the downtown specific plan final EIR, there are no new significant impacts would result as a result of this project. I'd like to conclude my portion of the presentation, turn it over to our architect Bijan to walk you through the design. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Bijan Armanpur, the architect for the project. I'm continuing with the presentation, and I'll tell you the story of the project. First, I would like to extend my sincere appreciation to the city staff for their time and guidance throughout the design process. The unique and exciting project site presented the following considerations. One, maintaining the visibility of the iconic Glendale Federal Building to the south. Two, pedestrian connection, both east-west and north-south. Three, activation of two secondary streets at North Milford Street and West Orange Street. Four, balance between public and private areas slash amenities. Five, design a project that enhances and improves the attractiveness and livability of the unique area of the project site. Now I go over the solutions that we have proposed in this project. The proposed project is sensitive to its urban context, which includes building to the north of similar height, northwest and south, the terrace levels at the east cascade down towards Brand Boulevard, allowing the mass to retreat from Brand in a manner that demands attention, and yet respectful of the historic Glendale Federal Building. When we talk about a building as an object, we think about its overall shape, about the quality and orientation of its facade, and how all these elements read as composition. Now here, the one-story commercial space fronting Brand is sliced, angled, pushed to north and south, creating a public open space and a majestic entry. The two spaces are intended to be used as restaurants, with outdoor seating adding another dimension entirely to the project. This other dimension is the way these elements feel when pedestrians approach this interactive open space, walk into the pasos, and feel the nature, public space, and the historic Glendale Federal Building. A total of nine live-work units and 219 apartments and two restaurant spaces, including the project. Now going over all of these, those units with a star are the live-work units which are facing Milford and Orange, and also the two at next adjacent to the restaurant, and also we have two on the upper floor. The two located next to the restaurant at the first level, and then two located the second floor next to an open deck that has direct access from, from Brand entrance. There is an exterior stair, exterior open stair, you see it here on the plan and here in this rendering, that leads people its way up to the second-level deck for experiencing another relaxation spot. These two upper decks, connected with a bridge, by a bridge, provide an opportunity for the occupants of the two live-work units, these two live-work units that are next to this open space at this level, to connect with the public and enjoy the outdoors. Main pasio at Brand directs pedestrian flow into the open spaces and branches into different, different directions. It also continues diagonally towards the courtyard and connects to the residential lobby of the complex. These pasos and courtyard are enhanced by generous landscape areas and water features, adding to the pleasant experience for pedestrian users. Users experiencing the angles, openness, the unique landscape and paving pattern which mimics a computer motherboard will feel a serene pleasure absorbing its intensity and distinct physical sensation. This is the entrance from Brand, and they as continue into the pasos. These are all the water features and landscape areas that leads pedestrians into the courtyard, This is the courtyard that leads the lobby, residential lobby. The residential lobby and its amenities right here at the northwest corner effectively separates the public and private uses while activating these secondary streets, Milford and Orange. The proposed project includes racks and storages for a total of 13 short-term and 58 long-term bicycles. Short-term racks are provided at three locations, as you see at the two entrances and here at this pasio, and the long-term racks are at the first subterranean parking level. We also have 28 reserved parking stalls for electric vehicles. The spatial quality of architecture, indoor and outdoor, is something we feel, we often begin to feel, before we pass through the door. We paid careful attention to carve and design the project in order to create movement and interaction of indoor and outdoor spaces. The diagonal pasos leading to the ground-floor courtyard, which are the interaction of public pasos and private courtyard areas, and the terraced and angled roof decks with a descending gesture toward the public Brand Boulevard are indicative of this movement and drama between spaces. The main common space is located at the highest usable roof deck. It includes swimming pool, landscape areas, and exercise room with direct southern exposure, where the occupants enjoy the quality of outdoor living and spectacular views. The public and common open space provided in the proposed project exceeds the requirement of downtown specific plan. Required public space is about 2,900 square feet, and we are providing 4,000 square feet. Required common space is about 37,000 square feet, and we are providing over 66,000 square feet. Landscape area is required to be 3,700, and we are providing about 6,000 square feet. Earlier, I indicated about the importance of the quality of the structure and orientation of building facade. The proposed project will be constructed with a Class A post-attention concrete, composite aluminum cladding, and cement-plaster facade surfaces in varying colors. The use of concrete structure has enabled us to gain maximum flexibility in creating an exciting facade. Different architectural vocabularies have been employed in the facade design to create movement, variation, and surprising experience as we approached the building, both from the street and the negative space of the courtyard. The massing of the facade at Orange and Milford is broken into component blocks arranged to create subtly faceted volumes that project and recede from the wallplane mass. As a result, several shadow planes are created in a dramatic manner, enhanced by varying colors and tones of metal panels, cladding, and cement-plaster surfaces. The courtyard facade feature a different concept, with sliding glass panels at the edge of the continuous balconies, creating an ever-changing facade pattern controlled by the occupants, these glass panels at the edge. On the other hand, Brand Boulevard facade, material palette, and its stepping terraces offer an experience that is completely different than its neighbor to the, to the south. The cascading and actively used terraces will improve the attractiveness and livability of the unique area of this project site. In summary, the proposed project creates a unique and interactive urban setting that enhances the experience of both building occupants and the general public. This concludes my presentation, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armanpur.
I have a question.
Questions?
So this is a Stage Two design review. Do we have a material board? And I've been asking about this for every project. When I was at DRB, we always got a, a material board was a requirement. Is it not a requirement for us as a design review, as a design review- Is it not a requirement for us as a Design Review entity?
Actually, it's part of your packet, the last few pages.
Yeah, but in actual...
The actual plan? No, technically, by, well, we would not, but I do have some samples in my office, so if you'd like to, of the actual...
How does staff feel about the variety of materials, the quality of materials?
Leave that to Mr. Jay Platt from our Urban Design Studio staff.
Because the thing, I mean, this project's gonna live or die by the materials, by the glass panels, the metal. I mean, if this was just concrete, this design's not gonna work.
If it were just stucco, it wouldn't work. And that's one of the things that was most pleasing to us when we were reviewing it, was the high quality of materials. There's a lot of extra expense going into the cladding materials at each of the different types of facades. We identified kind of three separate looks that the building has depending on which way it's facing, and we're very comfortable that the quality of the materials, and we'll certainly make sure if the council would like to...
Well, I trust you, I just wanted to be sure that that was the case.
We would trust, but verify what we were hoping to do, recognizing there is a great deal of room between the Phase Two and the delivered project. Phase Two approval is to organize a set of tours for council members for projects that are similar in scope and material finishes that we would agree with the developer such that we all are dreaming the same dream. And we would do that this summer.
Since this issue came up now, I mean, I was gonna talk about it at length, but the issue of the materials and what the end product ends up being, assuming the project gets approved, is paramount for me because of the location of the project, the scope of the project. This project could be it for that part of Glendale. I mean, this could be the thing that gives life to, and it should be, but in order for that to happen, it has to be just the best quality of everything, and that's, you know, the City of Glendale will expect nothing less than that. So with no more questions, we'll close the public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
I'll make some comments. You know, if, I'm just an engineer, but if I was asked to take the shape of this parcel of land, design a project to fit on it, there's no way I could have come up with, dreamed up anything like this. As has been said, Glendale Federal Building is preserved. The height, all the buildings to the west and to the north are all very tall buildings. It's almost like a tunnel when you're going on Milford or Lexington, whatever there. It's not good. This will tend to activate. I think it'll be a drawing card because we have nothing up in that neck of the woods that pulls people in. Two restaurants on there, that'll draw people in. The walking space, I can see a lot of activity occurring there. Star Theater is it that's next door will also play into it. Lot of open space, and you can pass through the project to all the different directions. One thing that hasn't been brought up, there's a pullout lane in front of the project on Brand. And I presume that is there to let people out of their cars to go to restaurants, whatever, and I presume that it's put there to be a valet stop. We have enough trouble trying to create valet parking on Brand further down. We have 228 guest parking spaces here, and there's no way that even half of those are gonna be occupied at the same time. So my guess is that the annex building, or excuse me, the historic building, Glendale Federal, a lot of those people will be parking in guest spaces, I'm guessing. It's right underneath Brand Boulevard, they can walk up and come straight into the Glendale Federal Building. So I think it's well-laid out. It's about time we had something that's facing on Brand that's not six, eight stories tall, and it's not. I think it's a great improvement. Like I said, I would have never figured on a design like this, but I think it will really bring people in when it is built. So I'm okay with it. We can analyze the parking after a year, two years, but it's, I think it'll work out okay with those 228 guest parking spaces made available. It's got all the amenities in there. It'll be interesting to see these panels that you're saying that are gonna give a lot of color to that neck of the woods that doesn't exist now, so I like it.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Quintero?
Okay, I am also, like Mr. Weaver, very surprised when I first saw the rendering, very surprised that the concept that the architect and the property owner came up with, and I think it's gonna be an incredible opportunity for mid-Brand, mid-to-north Brand, to kind of have its own nightlife, its own activity. I think you're gonna find some very nice restaurants, they're gonna wanna lease space here. Those live-work units, the terracing, I think there'll probably be some business people that will be interested in those live-work units. And all in all, I think it's a tremendous opportunity on Brand. I like the way it completely steps away from the Glendale Fed Building, so that will continue to be the iconic property, the iconic building there on Brand. As I mentioned earlier, mid-Brand, north-Brand, it's completely and totally dead in the evening. There is just no activity there. There is a little bit of activity in the past with the Brazilian steak restaurant, but that's about it. The rest of the, of Brand is completely dead. This is gonna make a big, big difference for Brand Boulevard. Then when you go to Orange Street, you follow Orange Street north, what you're basically doing is you're placing an outdated parking garage, a Glendale Fed parking garage, totally outdated, underused, and then across the street, there's another outdated parking garage that hopefully, that's owned by Citicorp. Hopefully in the future, there'll be some development there. Across the street on Milford is a huge office building. In this particular case, as was mentioned earlier, it's a much smaller development than what would eventually develop there. The property owner has done a tremendous job with Hollywood Production Center. He worked with the, worked with the historic preservation community and restored the building. It's fully leased. There's lots of people working there, everyone having to do with the tech industry and entertainment industry, et cetera, et cetera. And I can't help but think that perhaps some of the people that work in that building are going to be living right next door, and certainly the people that live in these units will be working along Brand Boulevard somewhere. I'm convinced of that. But I'm particularly impressed and happy with the terracing on Brand. I think that gives Brand some new life, and I do think that quality is what it's going to ultimately come down to, but I'm sure the architect and the staff and the council will ensure that we get top-quality finishes.
Mr. Mayor, there's, Mr. Quintero touched on it. The alley between the annex and the Glendale Federal Building, that's dark. Nobody cares to walk in that area at night. It's dead. It's not a good place to walk. This will eliminate all of that and activate the whole area, so that's another positive for the safety angle that will be taken care of.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Friedman?
Well, first I wanna make it clear to anyone who's watching that we are not here today to approve or not approve the density of this building. That was set by code in 2007 when the downtown specific plan was adopted. We don't all have the right to deal with that issue. This is a Design Review hearing. As the applicant said, this building could have been an 18-story residential building or a 25-story office building. They're building eight stories. Looking at the design, I think that the design is a nice design for what it is. I was very pleased that they stepped the building back to preserve the views of the historic Glendale Federal Building. I like the colors. I think that that kind of vibrancy is needed in our downtown, particularly the north part of the downtown. I am concerned about the parking. They don't have to provide parking for that building as required by code, and we can't force them to, but I do agree with the staff recommendations to have an analysis and to require valet parking for that building. To require valet parking, however you can word it legally, should parking become an issue. Now, I don't know how you evaluate whether parking becomes an issue, but hopefully we can do that before cars end up on the street. I understand that they are in agreement that they would provide the valet, which could fit an additional 111, I believe, cars. 111 cars should be more than adequate for Glendale Federal. I've been in that building, and that's probably somewhere near, maybe above, the amount of cars that are driving there now. I assume that with all this downtown housing coming online, that many of the people who work at Glendale Federal and the surrounding office buildings will be living in the downtown and not driving to work anymore. That's the point of a lot of this, is to get people out of those commuter cars. I also agree with Mr. Nigerian's suggestion that that be done not just once, but over some pre-described period of time, whether it's five years, I don't really know.
Right.
I know that this building will fill up over time, but Glendale Federal is pretty fully occupied. So we're talking about the Glendale Federal Building. We should know pretty quickly what their parking needs are, but I think maybe for five years on an annual basis. And if we get complaints, perhaps we can have a trigger that if there's a certain number of complaints that we can track to this building, we do that analysis to make sure that we really stay on top of any potential impacts from the Glendale Federal Building losing its parking. Again, this building could have been as high as 25 stories, and they're doing eight stories. So people need to keep that in mind, and also that they are not requesting any variances. There are no variances being requested in this building. The only thing we're here to evaluate is the design. We're not here to think, to look at, at the number of units, or even the height could have gone higher. This is a Design Review hearing. And again, they're within their rights to build. They could have built a lot bigger. I appreciate that they didn't build a skyscraper. They could have done that, eight stories. If you looked at the one rendering that was put up that showed the scale of the surrounding buildings, this will actually be smaller than most of the buildings and around the same size as the buildings that are currently on Orange. So I don't see a reason to deny it. I don't see, I do believe that the valet can handle any parking impacts. We can't deny it based on Glen Fed losing its, that parking lot, because by code, they don't, they're not required to have a parking lot. So those are my comments.
Nigerian?
And I also would agree with, if we do move this item, that we do it with the staff recommendations, as well as Mr. Nigerian's suggestion of having some sort of annual evaluation and possibly an additional evaluation if we feel it's warranted.
Well, just briefly, I do feel that we need to slow down development. The charges that I'm accusing any unethical behavior, I would like to refer anyone who has their packet, please explain this to me. A conceptual drawing of this sources the City of Glendale 2013. Anyone can explain that to me. If the allegation is this, the answer is this only came in a few months ago, how do we get a 2013 date with an artist's configuration of this? So there's a lot of questions to be asked. My questions were not out of line. I think that they were very legitimate, and I do think in another time in Glendale's development, had this been before us a few years ago, I think I probably could have supported it, but we're too far, we're at the head of a runaway train, and unless we stop it now, we're all gonna pay the price. These cannot be reversed. This isn't like hiring too many police officers or having not enough garbage trucks out there. This has permanent impacts to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Nigerian. So I, I work on this block, and far from in any way benefiting from this, I'm probably going to be very negatively impacted in the short term by this project and perhaps even in the long term, because A, there's gonna be construction happening right outside my windows for about 18 months, and I have no idea where I'm gonna have my associates park once that parking lot becomes unavailable. Nevertheless, this, I believe, is a project that this particular part of Glendale needs really badly. This is a project which in its grandeur can really make a difference for this part of Glendale, for this part of downtown, for all the businesses that are located around this block. I know every restaurant on that block, across from there, a block down, a block up, and those people are hurting. I mean, there is really no life there. There, no one, you know, they have few customers. Like Councilman Quintero said, if you ever walk there in the evening, the restaurants are closed. Come, you know, 7:00 PM, they're shut down because they don't get customers. No one's there. And this project, I believe, will take care of that issue. It will bring residents, it will make this part of Brand more prominent, it'll make it more exciting. I like the design. It's very original. So I support the project for those purposes, but I have to make a comment. I try to do my due diligence and familiarize myself with other properties owned by this developer, Amity Real Estate Group. So I, last year I did visit 1010 Wulsher Building, and some of my colleagues, I believe, have done so also. So from, what I know about this developer are two things, the 1010 Building and the Hollywood Production Center, which is on my block, on this block. And to be honest, and I'm just gonna be really, really honest because I think it's very important, when I was at the 1010 Wulsher Building, I was troubled by what appeared to be sort of low-quality workmanship on the building. I'm not too crazy about this Glendale Federal Building also. I know it's a historical building, and people may love it, or, but I personally walk by it every day, and it's not the prettiest thing, and certainly is out of place on that block right now. In the defense of the developer, I realized that both the 1010 Wulsher Building and this building, the Hollywood Production Center, are very limiting in their nature, that the 1010 Building was there already. Developer purchased it and had to work with what he had, so I guess he did what he could. The Hollywood Production Center is a historical building, therefore it's hard to change anything on it, improve on it, and, you know, some may not like what I say, but that's sort of the ugly side of historic preservation, where your hands are tied, and because something is deemed historic, all of a sudden, that's it. You have to ignore the fact that it's aesthetically not pleasing and pretend that it's beautiful, it's great, oh, we have to keep it the way it is. So I understand that the developer is committed to building this new project, the Phase Two, as, same with, you know, whatever came before, with the highest quality products and make it the most beautiful project in downtown Glendale, so that not only they can be very proud of it, we can be very proud of it, and everyone in Glendale will love this project. And I've been assured by staff, our city manager, our planning department, that we have the mechanisms to be on top of this project as it progresses, as it builds and grows, and at any point, if the standards are somehow subpar below what it is that we expect in the City of Glendale, that we can do something about it. We can stop it, we can reverse it. So there's a clear understanding between us, all of us, that this project will only So there's a clear understanding between us, all of us, that this project will only come true, it'll only become a reality if it's the best possible workmanship, product, material, you name it, possible. Because this is Brand Boulevard, downtown Glendale, we will accept nothing less. And for the interests of the developer himself, I think, you know, if you look at southern part of Brand, downtown Brand, for example, the Americana, that project is 98% occupied. That project is very popular, not only with Glendaleans, but thousands and thousands of people that come from outside of Glendale just to be there because it's pretty. It's pretty, it's designed well, you know, the whole commercial, you know, and residential that works well together. And I think this project has the potential to be all of those things. So with that in mind, I will support this project. Yes, Mr. Quintero?
All right. I want to confirm that you have committed a mortal sin by not loving the Glendale Fed Building. And I anticipate that the emails will be coming in momentarily.
Yes, I will be in payout, I'm sure.
Okay, well, I would move item A.
Three A, and I'll second it.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Thank you. And what's next on the agenda?
At item four, we read into the record. So item four, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we read into the record.
Been read into the record. So I don't know if you have any cards, you want to open the hearing and then?
Yeah, this is in conjunction with this project.
We, I believe we took number three and four together.
Yeah, but the actual motion was only on three A.
Oh, okay. Let's, do we have a?
Okay, I'll move item four A and?
You better open the public hearing and close it.
Let's open public hearing. We have no cards on item four A or four B.
I will move item four A and four B.
I'll second it.
Let's slow this down a little bit. Can someone come up and tell me what the implications are of closing this public alley for both the safety and the logistics of servicing the existing businesses off that alley, as well as fire and life safety issues?
Mr. Najarian, councilmembers, the southerly portion of Alley 234 is being proposed for a conditional vacation. Again, this would be a vacation only if the project is constructed. The alley vacation proposal was routed both to the Police Department and to the Fire Department. Both of those two departments had no comments, no conditions whatsoever. They do not use the alley for access of emergency vehicles. And again, this would not impede any of the existing commercial tenant spaces on the northerly side of Brand. They will still have that remaining 170 linear-foot-length alley for purposes of accessing to deliveries, the delivery trucks. I believe the Hopkins Buildings has access to their subterranean garage from that alley, so that northerly half of the alley will remain open. The project is also proposing a turnaround area, dedicating it on their property to the west of the existing alley, which will allow for any vehicles that accidentally drive down the alley to adequately turn around and drive out the alley to the north as well, to Milford Street.
Is there a letter or something from police or fire that?
We can provide that for you, yes.
You know, we don't have it today.
I do not have that with me right now, no.
They had no concerns at all? Go ahead, close it.
Correct. We have confirmation. Mr. Timfoy spoke directly to the Police Department himself right before the Planning Commission hearing as well.
When was that, last month, I believe?
The Planning Commission hearing was in May, correct. It was the second Wednesday in May.
So who's the current owner of that alley? Is it the property owner, and the city has an easement on it? Is that how that is working?
Correct. The 15-foot-wide alley, in one portion, it is a little bit wider. The underlying fee title belongs to the adjacent property owners with the public access easement for the alley purposes.
And it's my understanding that parts of the alley that will be widened, for example, the northern entry from Milford, the alley will actually become wider. Because, I mean, I get into my parking lot through that alley every day. It's a very narrow alley, and often we have delivery trucks that come up to unload, and that alley's closed off for an hour, two hours. I mean, so it's actually, in an ironic sense, maybe even an improvement.
Correct. The project developer is providing a two-and-a-half-foot dedication on their property, so essentially, if it's a 15-foot-wide alley, there would be, if the other adjacent property owner on North Brand Boulevard was to redevelop their property, they would be required to provide an additional two-and-a-half foot as well for a 20-foot-wide alley. In this case, 15-foot alley will remain, two-and-a-half additional feet will be dedicated for the alley widening, plus the turnaround area on their property.
How is refuse currently handled? The garbage pickup, it's from the alley, isn't it?
I would imagine so, yes.
So, but currently, the alley is not go-through. I mean, there's some bollards there, aren't there currently?
Currently, the alley does have just, it would be south-to-north access, one-way.
So they would, but currently, it's not a through alley, as we know, physically?
Currently, it is physically a one-way alley.
It is, it is a through, a vehicle can make that. There's no bollards that prevent? So a garbage pickup would be how? The truck would come in and then have to back up again? Or the garbage would have to be taken to the street? How would that happen?
And I would have to defer to Integrated Waste for alley, for trash questions. But again, I would imagine that the truck would be, they would be able to go ahead and utilize the turnaround for their trash trucks as well.
For a trash truck turnaround?
Typically, they also have the smaller loaders, so they'll actually move the bins, and they'll move the bins out towards either Milford for pickup or, and stage them in that direction. But there would be only three remaining properties along Brand that would actually have trash in the rear alley.
Okay, that's it. No more questions? Let's close the public hearing. Mr. Quintero, you had a motion?
And I second it.
Can we have roll call, please? Is, you made a motion as to A and B?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll adjourn for City Council.
Second.
Adjourn.